Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order please. And may we have roll call Ms. Powell.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones. This Paige.
Here.
Mrs. Quintero.
Here.
Madam Chair, if the clerk certifies the presence of the forum.
Thank you, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, got it. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay, hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept it, please.
Make a motion to reapprove the agenda as presented?
Thank you, can I have a second? One second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Down to the consent agenda, minutes and financial reports.
I make a motion to reapprove the consent agenda. It includes the minutes of the February 6th meeting, minutes of the February 27th meeting, April of 2023 financial report, and a food service report.
Thank you, can I have a second? One second. All right, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, monthly operating bills?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the April 2023 operating bills in the amount of $5,426,403.28.
Thank you. And I refute them at Mr. Jones's place, so I will second that. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now, we're down to staff member recognition.
All right, thank you Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we're going to begin with Ms. Susan Ailer, our Executive Director of Student Services, Special Education.
Good evening. This evening, I would like to recognize Laura Beth Chambers. Laura Beth is an amazing advocate for students with disabilities. She is our countywide adaptive PE teacher. She works in six of our nine schools, providing adaptive PE services to students with disabilities. In addition to this, her vision to create, develop, and coach an all-inclusive student basketball league for our high school students with disabilities began several years ago. Our team, the Hornet Heroes, is now in their sixth year. The league now has grown to eleven high school teams and includes a four-sport, bowling, kickball, bocce, and basketball. Laura Beth dedicates her time, resources, and skills to recruiting and training student volunteers, obtaining grants to fund uniforms and adaptive sports equipment, and collaborating with other adaptive physical education teachers within our district to establish games, travel, and schedules. The Hornet Heroes are loved by all. Laura Beth's love and passion for education and for students with disabilities is represented in her strong analytical skills. She works seamlessly through problems, manages relationships between coaches, parents, and school administrators, and has a proven track record of effective leadership. This is the most important part. Laura Beth always does what is right for those who often cannot advocate for themselves. She is authentic, devoted, and caring for the needs of students with disabilities each and every day. It is an honor to have her as part of our team. Congratulations.
Well, good evening. I do have three staff members that I am recognizing tonight for Lightfoot, so I'll call them up now. Jennifer Cullenan, Wendy Wolfrey, and Lori Jenkins. Jennifer Cullenan is our amazing bookkeeper at Lightfoot. Ms. Cullenan is the definition of professional. She is positive in her actions and in written and oral communication. She is highly effective at her bookkeeping duties, and she functions selflessly to serve others. Ms. Cullenan not only works above the required expectations as an expert bookkeeper, working with school funds and central office to make sure our finances are in order at Lightfoot, but she also does things such as creates our interactive bulletin boards, creates our attendance awards for each week and each quarter, and she is flexible and fills in where needed for coverage, especially assisting the phones in the front. Ms. Cullenan also has worked strategically and endlessly to first get the PTA going, and now to be the liaison between the PTA and the principal's office. She is organized, she is creative, she is highly efficient, while at the same time with a smile and positive words. So, thank you, Ms. Cullenan, for your dedication to serving the students at Lightfoot. Nurse Wendy Wolfrey is what it means to be Orange County. She has worked at Lightfoot for nineteen out of her thirty-one years as a nurse. She knows the students, the parents, the families. She knows the businesses and is quick to get us connected when we need support. Nurse Wolfrey is an example of the pride we have in our education at Orange County that I have talked about before, specifically at Lightfoot. As a nurse, she takes temperatures, gets medications, helps students and staff when they are sick. She helps in emergencies, she even helps students who need breaks or need to talk. She does car rider duty in the morning and afternoons. She helps cover lunch in the front office when needed. Most importantly, she does this with a smile, with kindness, with patience, and often with humor. Nurse Wolfrey is the force behind the entire school and is why at Lightfoot, we can all say how we are proud to be part of Orange County Public Schools. Ms. Lori Jenkins is also an amazing part of this front office team that we have at Lightfoot. Ms. Jenkins is a veteran registrar who joined us at Lightfoot this school year. She is the master of all things school. She has quickly learned how to register students, how to schedule students, how to complete attendance, how to complete the McKinney-Vento applications, how to check for residency. She's always willing to help out to complete a task, to help a parent, to help a student. She is very positive and always willing to help the duties and coverage as needed. She builds strong relationships with students, including making really close bonds with several students in our school this year. She also makes those bonds with staff members. She has helped with creating fun events for our staff participants, such as Super Monday, Taco Tuesday, Baked Potato Bar, her famous chai tea, and of course, So Many Salads Day that we had today. So, thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for all your support, and we're so glad that you joined us at Lightfoot.
I'd just like to say, under each one of these ladies and how honored and what a privilege it is to have them a part of this school division. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And congratulations to all.
And at this time, we'll put it up for public comment.
Yes, may we have two tonight? We have Laura Daniel and Evan Bailey.
Good evening. I first want to take a moment and apologize to both the school board, the administration, and to the public. Last time I spoke up here during public comment, and I said that fifteen students should have been placed in algebra class that were not, and I was incorrect. It was fifteen students, per my source, that should have been placed in geometry class, not algebra class, and so I misspoke. But either way, algebra, geometry is the same concept, and the same premise is still there. Kids are not being placed correctly and not being challenged enough. Something I fear is going to get worse before it gets better. You see, I met with the administration about this topic and about the high school schedule changing of year-long classes. It was quite a frustrating meeting, because once again, it shows the administration doesn't listen. I didn't even begin to touch on the topic of the stress levels this will add to our already overwhelmed kids, having to perform and concentrate on eight classes instead of four, many of which could be DE or AP classes. It might be worth mentioning that the average college kid only takes four to five classes at a time, but it seems this administration just doesn't care. We didn't even touch on the governor's school kids. My guess is if your kid is accepted, then the administration will ensure those kids, and only those kids, will get the classes that they need in what? Because Mr. Palmarie acknowledged that one of the flaws is that the kids could be locked out of the classes that they may want to take. When questioned about how certain scheduling could happen, Mr. Palmarie's response was just to shrug his shoulders. Dr. Honaker's response was to tell us that kids can take whatever college classes they want on their own time. Their own time. The time that they're supposed to be doing homework for now eight classes, studying extracurricular activities such as sports clubs, volunteering, participating in their faith-based organizations, and of course, sleep, because we all know how important sleep is to the developing brain. So much for a kid in Orange County reaching their fullest potential. But wait, it gets better. Those kids that fail a course, say they fail the first nine weeks of English, the plan is to pull them from an elective course, such as J or T C, and place them in a recovery course. For that period, they'll be in a classroom where they will work virtually, on a computer, to recover that credit or course that they failed. And while a teacher will be in that class, it may not match up to the subject that those kids are failing. For example, a math teacher may be stuck with kids that are failing English or science. Those kids are not being re-taught by that teacher, but they must participate in a virtual computer-based program. Did the administration, parents, and students recently in the past year speak out against such practices? After all, wasn't that the majority of what happened during COVID? Weren't people up in arms over this method of learning? And now you're taking kids that are going to be failing, disrupt their life, and make them return to virtual learning? But it'll be okay, because it'll happen in the school building with a teacher in the classroom. Does anyone else have issues with this? I'm sure a ton of parents would, if they knew. But the problem is that they don't, because the administration isn't giving the public a chance to speak up on this. Thank you.
Hello, I'm going to pick up where my wife left off. But wait, the administration also wants to add an advisory period at the high school. A thirty-two-minute period that will allow for two-minute announcements, so really a thirty-minute period with an average of twenty-two kids is what we were told. During that thirty minutes, a teacher is supposed to take attendance for that class, and then meet individually with those twenty-two students and review any and all missing work. Remember, we're talking about eight classes now, not four, and create a game plan for each of the kids to determine the missing work. Twenty-two students with eight classes each for each student, which may not even be a class with that teacher reviewing and creating a game plan. Anyone else see flaws with this concept? Are teachers going to be informed of their new responsibility before they sign their contracts? Why were we once again asking our teacher, why are we now, once again, asking our teachers to now be guidance counselors? And do I dare even say a parental role? Because I already do this with my kid. And even then, that advisory teacher may not even have that kid in a class of theirs. So, you're asking a teacher that potentially isn't even teaching that kid to make a plan to turn in missing work for classes they don't even cover? We are sending the message that teachers, you can't cover the kids in your class and their missing work, so now we're going to make a peer oversight for all of your students. We're supposed to be supporting our teachers, applying their work, and not adding responsibilities and undermining their teaching. They deserve to know this information before next year's contract goes out, so they can make an informed decision. The public should also know, they deserve to know. And for some reason, this administration is keeping the information from the public, the people you're supposed to serve. I also saw a video online. It's rather disturbing, in my opinion. I know some people say that the... Well, I'll just go ahead and put out that some teacher was standing up in front of a class and used the N-word and was recorded in front of their class. This is one of the reasons why that students should be able to have their cell phones in the class to catch situations like this, because it's not, it's... There's, you should never, like... It's just crazy to think that someone in that kind of position would use that kind of language in front of students. Thank you.
Hearing that no one else has signed up, I would declare...
I thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, for Mr. Sarver to inform the board of the surplus for our transportation.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to request an declaration of surplus property of school lessons due 46, 35, 67, and 77. The vehicles have reached the twelve-year mark for age. They all have mechanical issues that are mechanically cost-restricted to repair, and their sale or trade could be used to offset purchase of future buses. Any questions?
Does anyone have a problem with one here? And I'm proving this, so we can get them out to bed.
I move to declare the six school buses as surplus property for disposal.
Can I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, we're going to bring forward, and we'll have more on the twenty-second, but there's a few policy changes that we would like to bring forward to you and seek your support on. And I'll just go through them briefly. The first one is under CBA, and with our the need to restructure Central Office after the retirement of Mr. Berry, I worked with Micah Schwartz, and looked at some of the language, particularly here in number one, and in particular with the fact that we do not have an assistant superintendent and won't for the foreseeable future. And the job isn't principals and assistant superintendent, so we felt this was a little bit too narrow. And so, we were bringing that recommendation forward to you. The rest of the language remains unchanged. Within the student transfer realm, JCA, we are looking to essentially combine policy and add some language. And so, current policy, JCA, talks about the ability for students to transfer who are victims of a violent crime as identified in Virginia Code, if you can scroll down, Laura. So, that language is here in number four, and that language is not changing, so that will remain exactly as currently written in JCA. JCB discusses transfers by students that are in a Virginia Department of Education-identified persistently dangerous building. Number five is the exact wording out of current policy, JCB, and we would like to bring that into JCA. And then the remaining language is to give a little bit more clarity to our transfer process for students who are looking to go from one building to another for a particular reason, and identifying some of the rationales that we could utilize, as well as some of the conditions for student transfer. And so, we really want to make sure that we have clear policy in the realm of student transfer. I didn't feel that we had that at the moment. And then there are two corresponding forms that go along with JCA. One is JCA F1 Form 1, which is a draft proposal for you all to look at the student transfer application. And again, the reason for the request, those five bullet points match the same information that is inside of the policy. And so, we would like our parents and guardians to submit one for each child that they may be requesting to go to a different building. And simultaneously, if the reason for the request is due to childcare arrangements, we are going to ask parents to also please do the child verification form, JCA F2. And this gives some information as far as where the student is based, where they're requesting to go, and getting the childcare provider to also sign off that they are, in fact, watching over this particular, this particular student in question. And finally, we have a, some minor changes to JDC-R Form 2. This is our students who are coming to us from out of county, and so, we wanted to clarify the language at the top for out-of-county students, and added some language in there as far as getting a little bit of background of a student. Might have an IEP, might be identified as an EL learner, or identified as gifted. And again, these forms are to be a little bit more streamlined and to get the current process a little bit better under control and have more parameters and banks on the river, so to speak, for our principals and decision-makers who are doing student transfers. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And we wanted to bring this forward now as opposed to May 22nd. Of course, as we move through May, we would like to get these forms and this information out to our parents and guardians, so that they can go ahead and begin to initiate their requests for the upcoming school year.
My only question was, where did the ninety percent cap come from for determination that the schools closed or not?
That's a recommendation to you all as far as the number of students who might be in the building versus its max capacity. And so, that was just a draft that we brought forward to all if we wanted to manipulate that number or not have one. We were just trying to give some information to the parents as far as whether we might decide that a particular building or grade level might have to be closed based on if we don't have enough staff, or if the size of the class or the size of the student body is beginning to creep up and not giving us enough breathing. We want to make sure we have some room for students who already reside in that district for a particular building. And so, it was just a number that we felt gives us some flexibility and also gets parents and guardians to understand that some of the reasons that we have to say no sometimes is when the program capacity is starting to exceed the building capacity.
I have a question. Under the closed school transfers, I'm just reading incorrectly, but it appears that if a school closes, then these particular children are offered a transfer. But if you read the first line, it says, "Request to transfer to a closed school." I'm not sure why they would be transferring to a closed school.
There are still, there are still some times, and we want, when we're writing policy, we want to make sure that we are not tying our hands completely. And so, there are still some reasons. So, for instance, if a closed school is the spot that a student needs to go to because they have been the victim of a violent crime, we would not want to fall back and say, "The student can't go to school X because it's closed." So, it is in order for us to let folks know that there are some ways and some understanding that we might have to have some exceptions to the rule without tying our hands directly to it. And so, we're trying to put out front that if a building or a spray level is closed, and we understand that there are still some really important factors that we may have to consider, and we're not closing ourselves off to taking a look at those on a case-by-case basis.
So, closed not necessarily meaning condemned or...
Correct, yes ma'am. Closed, okay, so I apologize, now I would say, yes. Closed meaning, going back to originally Ms. Quintero said, as far as if, if, based on capacity of the building. If Orange, if Orange Elementary School holds six hundred kids and we have five hundred and ninety-five enrolled at the beginning of the year, and we have ten requests for a student who's supposed to go to Gordon Barber, we're going to have to be pretty judicious with those ten requests, because we want to make sure that we have seats available for students who might come in and live within the Orange Elementary School zone to make sure that they don't have to go elsewhere. So, it's based on the capacity or if we, if the number in a particular grade level is going too high and is putting us over the VDOE-established maximum. So, it's tied to our definitions of when we might have to close a school to a transfer. Yes, ma'am.
And to me, it just seems like if it was more elaborate, like maybe it was closed capacity or closed something else in the...
Yeah, we could add some language where it refers back to the previous definition and provide more clarity. Absolutely, that would be no problem. Of course, pending the, we'll add language in.
Jim, you good?
Well, if she's asking for it...
Yeah.
Updated and worded, maybe we just...
Okay. Yeah, we would make sure that the corrections was in there.
I mean, I think she brought up a good point, because when I, when I first heard what she said, I'm saying, "Why would anybody go to a closed school?" It doesn't make the schools good.
So, well, do you guys want to approve with the wording change? Or do you want them to come back after they've changed the word?
Well, I think we can, we can, can we approve the forms and then come back to the actual draft itself?
Sorry, would you...
Can we approve the forms and then come back to the draft policy? Or should we do the...
We could take a look at all the other ones behind this JCA.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can bring it back on the twenty-second.
So, you want to pull that? Well, she wants to look at the forms, so we'll just wait until the next meeting.
Okay, there's nothing here that's pressing.
Okay, all right, we'll just wait.
No problem. All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And then, next, then I'll have Mr. Honaker available as well. As you likely know, the Board of Supervisors met over the course of the last two weeks, and the numbers with which we were working to build this amendment presentation to you held true. And so, we know that the number, and it is accurate, and what we're able to accomplish. I still feel that we are going to see an increase in state revenue once the General Assembly acts and gets a final budget. I believe that would probably going to be pushed more towards June timeframe. And so, if that's the case, we would go back and go back to our initial priorities and come back to you all with some recommendations on, if we see an increase in state revenue, some recommendations on where to put that money, so to speak. So, hopefully, we would want to go towards raises or positions or what have you. So, we would come back to our established priorities. But the information that we worked with to build this amended budget and present to the Seventeenth, those numbers all held true from our local funding source, and of course, we knew what the state's skinny budget was at that time. And so, Gary, of course, and I are available for any questions?
Are there any questions?
Do we have a total on how much overage we have this year from the budget that was provided? And how much do you have to spend for this year?
No, we did not have that yet.
I think although...
For last year's budget? And... Is, for our expenditures this year, do we have a toll that we have not spent out of our current budget that's an overage?
That has not been...
That hasn't yet.
And like I said, one of the things that will also, as part of the revenues, is certainly...
And I, like I said, one of the things that will also as part of the revenue concerning, you know, final, uh, average state membership, which, uh, that should be reported in any day, that will help the revenue side as well. But that will be presented, but just.
Okay, are you guys okay going to approve this?
I make a motion we approve the operating budget for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And so now we can begin to work on our goal to get contracts out to our staff by the end of this week. So thank you all for your help with that. And then finally, I will bring forward, um, Dr. Wolfre and did Ms. Renee come with you? Monica, Monica's come with you. We're gonna, they are going to provide an update on the Virginia Literacy Act. And, um, really some good news here with, with the Literacy Act. And we are definitely ahead of the game here in Orange. And so I'm looking forward to Judy and Monica being able to tell you a little bit about the background of the act and where we stand.
Thank you, Dr. Monica. Um, so tonight, um, I have a pleasure presenting with Ms. Weaver, who is our coordinator of commandments. And Dr. Honigar is here available for questions as this does apply to our schools K through eight. Um, a lot of the emphasis so far has been focused on our primary grades and our elementary grades, um, but we'll all be available for questions during the presentation. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to share more with you this evening about the Virginia Literacy Act. Um, it's really important that we're keeping everyone informed because this legislation does have numerous implications for our school division, our staff and their instruction, our students and our families as well. Um, so tonight in our presentation, um, we're going to provide a very broad overview of, of the legislation, the timeline that's been outlined, um, by the General Assembly as well as our Department of Education, and steps we've taken as a division, and then what we can expect moving forward, um, particularly with the selection and approval of the curriculum materials. Um, so the Virginia Literacy Act, who will also here refer to as the BLA, just for sake of time. Um, so BLA has gone through a number of iterations since it's initially proposed and passed in two thousand twenty-two. Um, originally, the legislation focused on grades K through, and as I said, um, now this will also apply to grades K through eight. It was initially written, um, with the primary aim of making sure that all of our students are able to read and meet their grade level literacy benchmarks. Um, and so in order to do that, there's also requirements around training the teachers, um, around types of resources that we provide to our parents, and, um, other practices that we can use, um, to make sure that our students are making the reading gains that they need to. In order to do that, there are some key components that are part of the Virginia Literacy Act, and this is basically where all the science and the research around reading and how students, um, learn to read best intersects with evidence-based practices that our teachers can use. Um, so in order to do that, um, we need to make sure as required by the act that all of our school divisions in Virginia align their core curriculum with the screening procedures that they use to determine students' reading interventions, and there's intervention materials and, um, the services they provide their students. Additionally, we're required to provide, um, Virginia Board of Education for professional development, um, for our teachers and for reading specialists or administrators. And we're also required to provide resources to our families, um, and recommended resources of how they can support their students' literacy growth. And our preparation programs for teachers, and this is very exciting, are also required to make sure that teachers are prepared to teach, um, based on the science of reading or structured literacy. You can see from the timeline, um, coming up that this work actually began, um, quite a while ago, um, with the legislation that was approved in two thousand twenty-two. And at that time, um, the Board of Education did begin that process of reviewing core curriculum. You can see since then, there have been advisory groups that have been at work along with training provided to, um, teachers and, um, the vetting of other curriculum and resources, all with the intent of implementing, um, at least a plan for all of our classrooms, um, for adhering to the, um, Literacy Act by the fall of two thousand twenty-four. And at this time, Ms. Weaver, who's been on the forefront of leading a lot of our work here in Orange and working directly with the Virginia Department of Education for administration teachers, is going to share what we've done here in Orange and you'll be excited to see the future.
Thank you all. In August of two thousand twenty-two, I established a partnership with the George Mason T-TAC to provide professional development for teachers and principals in kindergarten through eighth grade. In November, all reading specialists in the first round of teachers completed an IMSE training for, which is multi-sensory decoding instruction. In June of two thousand twenty-three, a second round of teachers will be trained. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Orange County Public Schools K through teachers will be using the new VOWs materials in place of PALS to assess all K through students three times a year. The new assessment will provide data that aligns with the instructional delivery changes taking place. Using VOWs assessment data, reading specialist teachers, parents and administrators will be creating individual student intervention plans using guidelines from the Department of Education. The new law changed the standards of quality for reading specialists to one in every five hundred and fifty students kindergarten through eighth grade. Currently, Orange County meets those requirements. In August, I, um, Orange County Public Schools reading specialists will attend the state-required two-day training in Charlottesville, as well as the year-long computer-based training. The Division Literacy Plan has been updated on, is in ongoing revisions, um, and has, has been revised to reflect all that I've shared with you and in twenty, in anticipation of the changes needed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The next steps for Orange County Public School will be continue to evaluate our current core supplement and intervention materials for alignment with the Virginia Literacy Act requirements and reading specialists attending their training. Orange County Public Schools will also continue to provide ongoing training for teachers, principals, and provide, um, for parents informational sessions for parents as well.
Um, so the, the Literacy Act really pulls together requirements and also consistency, um, that provides a lot more guidance to all of the stakeholders, um, from the state level, um, down to the classroom level in order to support our students, um, and to make sure that our students are reading on grade level and making the growth that they need to in their literacy development. Um, and on the final slide, we have some links to some more in-depth information that you can certainly, um, take a look at, at, at your leisure. Um, but we're also happy to answer any questions that you may have to make.
I just have a question about reading specialists. Give me some idea roughly how many reading specialists, specialists do we have? Do you have one in every school, five in every school?
We do. Um, we have, um, I'll go through them individually. At Orange Elementary, we have four reading specialists. At Gordon Barber, we have three, and we have two in each of our other elementary schools. And at each of the middle schools, we have a reading specialist.
Okay, and just how do they, how do they function? Do they come into the teacher's classroom and actually teach, or do they just teach the teacher how to teach?
Monica, we work directly with our reading specialists.
So the reading specialists are providing both roles depending on teacher need. They serve as individual students in either a push-in or a pull-out model, and then they do provide ongoing, um, professional development. And they also are there to assist teachers in planning for the students who have those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Dr. Wolfre, appreciate you all. And we're, we're excited about the Literacy Act and, and many are across the Commonwealth. Uh, this was a bipartisan, um, effort. If I believe it passed both chambers unanimously. And it was, um, originally spearheaded by, primarily by Delegate Corner in the House and, uh, was signed by Governor Yupkin in, in, in two thousand twenty-two, and then it was ultimately expanded. We got the information that it was expanded through eighth grade, uh, right around late January, early February. It was originally going to be targeted K three. Uh, then it expanded through eighth grade, and we know that, uh, that is absolutely necessary. And so it was also good to know, um, that we, that we are meeting the established standard before the standard was even the new standard. And so that's a feather in the cap to, to Orange County and making sure that we have the right people in place. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair, members of the Board. That's all for reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So at this time, Ms. Bauer, can we review, um, calendars?
We normally don't include this in the regular meeting, but since May is a, a quite active month, I thought I would review it with you again. So we do have, um, well, school board meeting today. Um, there is a Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's, um, School Meeting on the third. And then the senior events start, um, the seventeenth. We have Senior Scholarship Night at seven o'clock at the, um, Hornet Sports Center. The last day of school is the eighteenth. Prep Board meeting on the nineteenth and graduation at eight-thirty at Porterfield Park. And if any of you are planning to attend, um, just let me know and I'll make sure to get parking passes and things like that for you. And then we have our work session on the twenty-second because the holiday is on the twenty-ninth. And there's an Edf, Orange County Edf Foundation Board meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes. Um, I have a committee report. I'm going to go over, I also have some things that we can add as well. Um, so I am currently, um, on the Character Education and SEF, excuse me, SEL Committee. Uh, we have met a few times, uh, so far this year, with our last meeting on Thursday, April twentieth, so two weeks ago. Um, we are working, we are currently working on new curriculum for character education, which the VA Law twenty-two point one dash two oh eight dot point oh one requires us to implement. We have been reviewing the guiding standards for social emotional learning given by the Virginia Department of Education, working on the pros and cons. Um, so this will help guide us in our decisions. Ms. Eller and her booking are on, uh, the committee as well, along with some other department heads and teachers. Um, our next meeting will be Friday, May fifth. Um, once we finalize the curriculum, we would like to present a stood forward and to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, can we have a closed session certification place?
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or Performance of a Division Employee as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia. Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, Retirement of Employees. Also, Discussion of Pupil Personnel as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two for Early Admission. Weaver compulsory attendance out of county, out of district, or request and studentism.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so can we have closed session certification place?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas two point two dash thirty-seven twelve C of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best each member's knowledge, only public business matters law fully exempted. Some open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All call please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Quinter?
Aye.
And then I'm sure the clerk certifies the vote and as follows, four yes folks, no no votes, with one member exit.
Thank you. Um, disposition of personnel actions. Um, Dr. Moore?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Recommend to approve the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
We are to, um, approve the recommended approval of personnel agenda to include resignation, employment, transfer, salary adjustment, and renewal of certified and classified staff for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now disposition of pupil personnel actions. Dr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Recommend to approve the, the pupil personnel actions as presented in closed session.
I do approve, um, pupil personnel, twenty twenty-three dash ten and twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second. I'm still waiting.
Okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Um, is there any other business? Harry, none. I adjourn this meeting.